Order the workshop for March 26, 2018. You'll notice that there's only five of us up here. We voted Pfeiffer and Jones off the island. Mr. Marriott, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we excuse Mr. Jones and Mr. Pfeiffer for tonight.
Just a second. There you go. They are actually on spring break with their families. That passes five to zero. Okay. Mr. Bill Ray.
We have identified who's excused. I know the clerk would like to take roll call for who is present, so.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton. Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Very good. So moving on to the workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. One of the issues that I think that the council has long been engaged in and has challenged the staff is how we continue to build capacity and really a communications network throughout our neighborhoods, particularly those that are not within a homeowners' association. Tonight, Ms. Carice Canales is going to lead us in a conversation about the efforts that we have undertaken to, in fact, engage the neighborhoods, really combining that engagement with the concept of resiliency, which Ms. Anessa James will also be speaking about. So without further ado, Carice.
Could we load up the presentation? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Carice Canales, and I'm the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator. So I oversee all of our neighborhood programs, anything from Snow Buddies to City Hall 101 to our block party trailer. And tonight, I'm here to present the recent changes to our Neighborhood Engagement Program, now called Neighbors Connected: Neighborhood Strong. So tonight, I'm here with Anessa James, our Community Resilience Coordinator, to talk about the overview of changes, the rationale behind them, what benefits you should expect, and the results to date. So now I'll pass it off to Anessa.
Thank you, Carice, and good evening. Let's see if this is working for us. There we go. The last time I had an opportunity to speak with you guys, I spoke about updates to our emergency operations plan. We also discussed the city's first disaster recovery plan, but I also spent some time talking about community resilience. And I spent a lot of time on talking about how social ties between neighbors and connections of information flow between local government and citizens really improves the ability of a community to prepare for a shock, respond for a shock, and recover, and even thrive in the face of unexpected changes. So I'm here with Carice today because our programs really align in a lot of the goals and outcomes we're trying to achieve. We've been working really closely together as we're looking for efficiencies in the Neighborhood Engagement Program, ways that, you know, we can partner to increase the overall community resilience as an organization and as a city. So today, I'm really going to just set the scene for all of the work that Carice has done. I'll be talking about why we're investing in Neighborhood Engagement and what some of those benefits might be. So the first question, why are we taking time and effort to invest in Neighborhood Engagement? There's a number of reasons, but one of the key reasons is because our citizens have said that it's a priority to them. You'll see on the slide, I've put three screenshots of a number of planning and survey documents that have involved a whole lot of community engagement involvement and involvement over the last five years. On the far left, you'll see our 2014 comprehensive plan. And the community vision in this plan outlines that, quote, "We will achieve our goals by being a community of strong and vibrant neighborhoods. We will also achieve our goals by promoting community pride, engagement, and volunteerism in all that we do." So again, this is the community voice speaking to us about where they want to go with Arvada. In 2016, we finalized our Parks Master Plan, and you'll see in this document, there are similar themes that are rising to the top here. One of four themes is the theme of community. So we heard our residents stressing the importance of connectivity, increasing opportunities for volunteerism, more information sharing with each other and also with the city, and then hosting smaller events so that neighborhoods and community members could really interact and engage with each other and build those really tight bonds. So lastly, most recently, we just finished our 2017 Arvada Citizen Survey. And again, this is an opportunity for citizens to rate their overall satisfaction with things like quality of life, community amenities, and local government. In 2017, the final report identified some key areas for targeted improvement, and one of those key areas for improvement was the sense of community in neighborhoods. So we were hearing from survey respondents that they were voting, they were indicating that there was a lower level of sense of community in neighborhoods than we find on average. So this is an opportunity for us to improve sense of community in neighborhoods on behalf of our citizens and with our citizens. So another reason why we're investing in Neighborhood Engagement is because we've heard from you that this is a priority. If you'll recall from our strategic plan, one of our key strategic results is that by 2019, 50% of households who are not in an organized neighborhood in 2013 will have organized neighborhood associations or groups with whom the city can liaison. This is important because not only is there a way for our council to liaison with our residents, to share information with them, there's also an outlet for neighborhood groups and associations to reach out back to you and share their visions and goals for our community. So this is really, the goal of this is to create two-way feedback loops.
Dot Miller's got a question.
Can I just ask a quick question? Do you know where we're at now?
We do, yeah. We're going to get to that in a following slide. No worries. No. That's the exciting part, right? All right. So what are some benefits of effective engagement? What do we stand to gain if we do this right? There are a lot. So we've seen improved health, well-being, and quality of life outcomes in communities where neighbors know each other and interact regularly. We see improved public safety and code enforcement outlets as well. So not only does this mean that our police officers and code enforcement officials are better able to do their jobs, but it also means that if neighbors can work out conflicts between each other, those issues don't elevate to the level of needing kind of outside support there. Better communication and access to information is another benefit that we're looking for here. Improved efficiency in deploying community and city resources can be attained through effective engagement. And finally, the creation of vibrant communities and desirable places to live is a real asset for our city. It improves, you know, economic outcomes for our residents and homeowners and businesses. If people are excited about getting to know a neighborhood, they want to visit Arvada, they want to see, you know, all of the great work that our neighborhoods are doing together. So together, these benefits really do contribute to those larger resilience goals that we're pushing for here. So by having effectively engaged neighborhoods, my hope through my program is that we can better prepare for, respond for, and even thrive in the face of all of the unexpected shocks and challenges, be it a flood or some kind of economic downturn, you know, we can weather that together. So I'm going to pass it back to Carice, and I will be here until the end of the presentation. There's going to be an opportunity for you to ask more questions. So if you have specific questions for me, save them. Sound good? Okay.
Thank you, Anessa. So what is Neighbors Connected? Launched on February 1st of this year, it is now the city's umbrella initiative to engage our neighborhoods. And the new structure of this program has allowed us to develop different tools and processes that will really help neighbors both connect with each other and with the city. So under this new program, the neighborhoods throughout the city of Arvada will organize their own neighborhood groups and enroll online in our program. And you can see on your screen, that's a screenshot of our website where these neighborhood groups can access the enrollment form and find out more information on our program. So enrollment in this program unlocks access to our incentives, such as the block party trailer, the neighborhood movie program, and our neighborhood improvement grants. And so we did move the block party trailer and neighborhood movie equipment to Arvada rentals to manage so that they can more efficiently handle all reservations and delivery. And we know that they've been a longstanding partner with the city, so we're very happy that that culminated.
Yeah, they're a great corporate citizen.
They're wonderful. So, you know, we really wanted to reserve these tools to our neighborhood groups, not only to increase access for them to use it, but also to get them back to their original purpose of promoting neighboring. When we developed this program, we heard from many of our neighborhood leaders that it was too competitive in the past and that a lot of them never had the chance to reserve the trailer or the movie equipment. So we were very intentional in structuring it this way, and we know that the single entry point of that enrollment form will also allow us to streamline our programs and information so that our citizens better know how to engage with the city. So Counselor Miller, here's the answer to your question. Who has engaged so far? So just as a reminder, our strategic result states that by 2019, 50% of households who are not in an organized neighborhood in 2013 will have an organized neighborhood association with whom the city can liaison. So you can see in the graph, we have the 2013 baseline when we originally established this strategic result, and the blue being the organized neighborhoods, the households that are in organized neighborhoods. And that could be an HOA or a traditional neighborhood group. And the red is the unorganized households. And so in order to meet our 50% goal for 2019, we needed to organize 15,976 households, for a total of 34,353 households. Well, I'm very pleased to tell you that in the first five weeks of our program, we have already surpassed this benchmark. We have seen incredible levels of interest on this program, and so we've already had 37 neighborhood groups enroll, which brought our total of organized households to 34,766. And that's 413 over our 2019 goal, and it's only March of 2018. So we're very happy about how this program has progressed, and we're especially happy that we've been able to develop additional touchpoints with neighborhood groups that we never knew existed before, and also to create the energy and enthusiasm around this program that so many new groups have emerged. So later in the presentation, I'll be able to show you exactly where those groups are engaging with one of the new tools that we developed.
Yes, go ahead. Nancy.
So Carice, are you seeing an overall arching theme in terms of people joining, you know, getting involved with the neighborhood, getting connected with the program?
That they are getting connected with this?
Yeah. And in other words, the folks that have already been connected since you've come on board, are you seeing an overarching theme that makes them want to get connected? Are they saying, you know, that it's solely for the block party trailer and that, or is it anything else, or what are you hearing?
Well, honestly, one of the most popular things that we've seen is our Neighborhood Leader Network, which I'll go into as one of the new tools, but it's all the people that want to be leaders in their community. And so we actually had a brainstorming session in this past fall, in November, and we used social media, Nextdoor and Facebook, to show, hey, here are some people who care about their communities. And we really use that as a challenge to others, and it's just been constant people reaching out and saying, hey, I want to be involved. It's amazing. It's not just about the block party trailer. It's just about knowing how to get engaged in their community. Thank you. So as I mentioned, we've been able to develop some new tools that will really help us to streamline our pre-existing programs and also to fill in the gaps where they may have existed. So the first tool that I want to highlight is the Neighborhood Search. And so we'll do a quick demo, but, you know, this is a really interactive tool for our residents to use that will not only help them learn the name of their neighborhood if they don't know, also the boundaries of their neighborhood. And these are things that we heard as recurring themes when talking to our Arvada residents, that there's a lot of confusion around neighborhood identity. So we're hoping that this tool will help remediate that a bit.
Carice, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Are you guys using the same neighborhood boundaries and names as Nextdoor uses? Is that?
So this map, it uses mostly the same as Nextdoor, and there were a couple tweaks, I believe, with subdivisions, and this was something that my predecessor worked on with our mapping folks.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So the third thing that residents can do with using this tool is they can see which neighborhoods are already enrolled in the program and then get contact information for those leaders so that they know exactly how to engage. And so-
And so how do they do that? They just click onto one of the-
We'll do a demo.
Okay, great.
But I do want to say, if you turn around, because it's hard to see on your individual screens, any of the areas that have lines across them are already enrolled in the program. So we can very clearly see where people are engaging and where there are gaps. But let's do a quick demo so we can dig into it. Anessa, could you search Homestead Park? And that's a name of a neighborhood. So we can see when we search the name of a neighborhood, you'll get the name of a neighborhood group that's enrolled in the program, as well as any contact information that's available for them. And then we can also do this with an address search. So we'll just do City Hall's address, 8101 Ralston Road. Perfect. So we can see that we are in Memorial Park neighborhood and that it is not yet enrolled in the program. So we really hope that this tool will help our residents know how to engage better and, you know, clear up some misunderstandings about where their boundaries may be. But we've already been sharing this with some of our leaders in the program, and it's probably one of the most popular tools that we've developed.
And so is this on our webpage?
So Phase 1 of this map is, it's on our Neighbors Connected site. And what Phase 1 doesn't have is being able to pull up the contact information, but I wanted to share that with council first, and then we'll go ahead and make it open to the public.
Right. Dot Miller.
So two-part question, because my first question came after you just finished that. So obviously, a leader doesn't mind having their email address out there to everybody, so they opt into you putting that on the website.
Yes. In the enrollment form, we specifically asked them which contact information they want shared.
Cool. And then when you come up to a section that doesn't have a neighborhood, is there a way that we could put on there, you currently are in an organized neighborhood, but would you like to be? Click here and sign up and be a leader.
Make a little pop-up?
Yeah.
I would have to talk to our GIS folks, but I'm sure-
They can.
They can. It's amazing that they have developed this in just a few weeks.
Because I wouldn't know what to do, so.
So my house is not on here. You're more than welcome to put my address in there, but-
Anessa, can you click on the "I," the info button? Thank you. So we do have a About welcoming page, and so we have the link to our website where they can get more information. And that website, I showed you the screenshot on the first slide. It lays out what we ask in the enrollment form so that it will guide you into organizing your group. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. So my neighborhood doesn't have a name, and that was what I was just wondering, you know, because our neighborhood doesn't have a name, what do you put in there? But it does say unnamed. Okay, that's cool.
Okay. So the next tool that I'd like to highlight is the Neighborhood Leader Network that I mentioned previously. And this is a very engaged group of residents that have identified themselves as leaders in their community. And this group meets quarterly, and they actually played a large role in developing this program. We met in November of this past year to really share their ideas, work through whatever challenges that they had had in the past. They identified guest speakers that they may want to come to their group, and definitely an engagement point with council. But we know that this group will continue to be a great feedback loop as we keep developing new initiatives at the city. And you can see in the photo, this is a, this was from our last meeting in February, where we celebrated the launch of the program. So we had 40 leaders from all different parts of the city, just really excited and learning more about the program. So we're very excited to keep working with them. The third new tool that I'd like to highlight is our Neighborhood of the Year Award. And so this is a really great way that we can recognize the valuable work of our neighborhood groups in improving their communities. And the structure of this award is, to use a self-nomination form, this is something that we've seen in other cities across the country work really well because it's accessible to neighborhood leaders. And so essentially, what they'll do is make a compelling case for how they've fostered that sense of community that we hear throughout those community plans Anessa mentioned, and also to promote a sense of neighborhood identity.
So who judges it?
So that, we have not, you know, put together the whole panel, but I think council would be a great case for that.
I knew you were going to say that.
You asked, Mayor.
I did ask, yeah. I asked the question.
You know, we're always looking for more opportunities to help you engage with our community.
That's great. Yes, I think that's-
So-
I do, I would like to see some engagement between council and these leaders, so I think that's anything we can do to foster that.
Yeah, and this award would be presented at a neighborhood, an annual neighborhoods reception, so great opportunity for council to attend.
Great.
The last tool that I'd like to highlight is our Neighbors Connected Google site. So this is a very dynamic page that we're able to give our leaders once they successfully enroll in the program. And so it really allows us to highlight different resources, initiatives at the city, so neighborhood groups know exactly how they can plug in and get involved. And it really helps us align with some of those priorities that we saw emerge in those community plans that Anessa mentioned. So for example, we're able to highlight her resilient neighborhoods and emergency preparedness materials. So if groups want to reach out to her directly, they know exactly how to do so. Also on this site, we have a resource center and a directory, and these have things like ideas for community projects, fundraising ideas, and then it really helps them to network with each other. Okay? Thank you, Anessa, for navigating. You know, we're very excited about all these tools, and we know it's a pilot year, so we're always looking for feedback from the people enrolled in our program to see if there are more gaps or things that they would need. But so far, they have been responded to very well.
Carice, so we were actually just talking about neighborhoods and litter and that kind of thing. I know there are a number of neighborhoods and groups that do litter cleanup around the city. Is that something that this program might encourage through possibly, you know, competitive games or awards, something like that? I know in the Lake Arbor neighborhood, for example, they, excuse me, they actually celebrate a home that has been beautifully cared for with a little plaque, you know, that says, I forget exactly what it says, but something complimentary. Is that something that we might think about doing?
Absolutely. And I think one of the great pieces about this program is we're able to provide our residents with really direct information and ideas. So on that, the Google site that we were just on, we do have a list of community projects, and among them, I know we put in a lot of neighborhood cleanups and, you know, things like that. And I think one of the things that we're trying to roll out are cross-neighborhood competitions. So one of my favorite examples that has already happened is with the Arvada Food Bank. We had Club Crest neighborhood, or Club Crest South. They issued a challenge to all of the neighborhoods throughout the city to fill the shelves at the food bank. And so we used Nextdoor and Facebook, and within a few hours, we had a dozen people posting, you know, I brought this many bags of food to the food shelf, or my neighborhood's doing a drive. So it's just a really captivated audience where we can test out some of those initiatives. Okay? So the last item that I'd like to talk about tonight is our grant programs. And so we still have the same three grant programs that we always have, the Know Your Neighbor, our small planning grant, and our Neighborhood Improvement Grants. But we've changed the intent of the two smaller grants so that they can better serve our goal of organizing our neighborhoods. So we're trying to reserve those two smaller grants for new groups to get organized and hold events to get to know their neighbors so that they'll be ready to enroll in the program and then start utilizing the larger Neighborhood Improvement Grant. So moving forward, we would like to recommend a process change to the Neighborhood Improvement Grant, and that's the up to $3,000 grant used for larger community projects. And so we've heard a lot of feedback from some of our previous grant users that the timeframe for getting a grant approved is sometimes challenging for them to maintain their momentum and get their project completed on time. So we would like to recommend that grant applications are reviewed and approved by the Neighborhood Engagement Team once a year. And the Neighborhood Engagement Team is a group of staff from all different departments, and we already meet bi-monthly to talk about all sorts of neighborhood initiatives. These staff already have many different touchpoints with these neighborhood leaders, so not only would we be able to strengthen those relationships, but the Neighborhood Engagement Team could provide a faster approval process, keep that momentum going, and really give them an improved experience for using the grants. And of course, staff would provide council with reports on the grant applications, the criteria, and the approved projects in their weekly memos.
Great. Mr. Marriott.
So along with that, the grant program, the neighborhood grant program, the part of it that was difficult or that got difficult before it had to change a little bit was that the neighborhood grant program had kind of turned into homeowners' associations that were already organized, were able to apply successfully for grants to just offset their responsibilities. And I think some of us on council were uncomfortable with that and encouraged those things to be different. In changing to a different system for approving these grants, for reviewing and improving them, I guess as a councilperson, I would just want to make sure that we don't just slide back to because they're the most, it's easiest for them to apply, that the neighborhood grant program just become back to subsidizing homeowners' associations on their core responsibilities, that it ought to really be for true neighborhood grants, whether it's a homeowner's association or not, but not just helping them with their deferred maintenance, you know, which is kind of what it was at one point.
I completely understand your concern, and we did go through the criteria again and revised it completely. So there are ways that we can offset, and I'm happy to share that criteria with council.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, so that we see the criteria, and if we sign off on the criteria, then, you know, I could see where administratively it would be quicker to implement, but as long as we've got some say about the criteria.
Sure. I can definitely do that for you. Any other questions about the grants? No? Okay. So, you know, all of these changes to our Neighborhood Engagement Program, we really believe that they'll better help us as a city to hear the wants, needs, and visions of our residents at a neighborhood level. of our residents at a neighborhood level. We'll also be able to identify many more opportunities to engage with these groups, whether that be having council attend a ribbon-cutting, or a neighborhood meeting. So we're very excited for those. Ultimately, we know that the enhanced neighborhood connections that are cultivated by our program are going to better serve some of our existing initiatives. So like Snow Buddies, or our Home Rehab programs, we'll be able to dial those down to a neighborhood level, so it's neighbors helping neighbors, which is our ultimate goal. And I know that with these changes, we'll also be able to engage populations that may not have historically engaged with the city in the past. So, you know, our youth, our seniors, diverse populations. We're really developing new excitement and enthusiasm around engaging with the city that will be able to cultivate new relationships. So, you know, we'll continue to keep council updated as this program continues to evolve, as we know it will, since it's a pilot. And, you know, I know we have a workshop scheduled for later this year, even outlining some of the changes to our housing programs, where neighborhoods engage, but Anessa and I are always willing to meet with you individually, to talk through any other questions. But I would like to thank you all for your time. And Anessa, if you want to join me, we will take any more of your questions tonight.
Mark McGough, you're first.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is the first I've seen the neighborhood map of the entire city. I'm wondering, how many neighborhoods have been identified? How many were on that map?
There are eighty-two neighborhoods.
Eighty-two neighborhoods, and does each of the neighborhoods have a name?
So there were a couple that were annexed since the map was created, so those are still unnamed on the map. But part of this process is to continue making sure that those neighborhoods get names. So I know, for example, Sunset Mesa area up in the north-central part of the city, that was not on this map, but we heard through the program that it was a neighborhood.
Okay, so we've got the numbers of how many households are involved in the organizations. So if we took a look at it from the other way, we've got the HOAs, of course, that comprise a good number of these identified neighborhoods. How many of the eighty-two neighborhoods, how many neighborhoods are involved in the program, either being part of a HOA, or, well, I guess maybe I could ask the other question, how many of those are HOA neighborhoods, and how many are non-HOA neighborhoods? And of the non-HOA neighborhoods, how are we doing in terms of counting up the neighborhoods that are involved in the process?
So I don't know that question off the top of my head, but I know, let's see, my last count was there were twenty-six neighborhoods that had enrolled. I would say it was about half and half between HOAs and traditional neighborhoods, but I don't know the exact number.
I've always thought, I mean, just in general terms, that about half of our city is in HOAs and half not. If that were the case, then we'd have about forty non-HOA neighborhoods, and you've got about twenty-six overall, right?
That have engaged since February 1st, correct?
Okay. Well, and just another one, I'm just wondering, is there still in the city anything like the old welcome wagon program for new people coming into the community? Does that still exist someplace?
Yes, the Arvada Visitors Center, they create welcome bags, and they're available for free for neighborhood groups. So they actually, I'm working with them on the HOA list, so that we know who to reach out to, and tell them, you can go pick up these free bags. And many of the neighborhoods are already hyperorganized and do their own welcome wagon.
Okay, thank you.
Dot Miller, you're next.
Thank you, I just have a couple questions, I'm going to rapid-fire them at you.
Okay.
Can we bring up that map again?
Can you?
Is that possible? And while we're bringing up the map, how are you marketing to the neighborhoods that you don't have leaders in yet? Are you actively searching for leaders, like outreach to leaders that are not, you don't have any coverage?
Yes. So when we were developing this program in the fall, we used a lot of Nextdoor posts and reaching out. So Cindy Javale, our communications specialist, and I, we like mass-messaged all of the Nextdoor leads, just to get them invited to that Neighborhood Leader Network brainstorming session. So we had already done that, we've used the Arvada Report, social media, things are spreading through word of mouth quite a bit. So organically, they've been coming to us, but we're also planning to do outreach.
And do we, does the city still have booths at festivals? And can we do it that way, too?
Yes, I'm actually tabling at the kite festival.
Nice.
You'll be getting a seed packet that says, plant the seed of community today.
So what is the process of naming a neighborhood?
Well, do you mean for the entire neighborhood, or just your group?
Yeah, so for the entire neighborhood. So I'm in this light blue area at Eightieth and Pierce that has no pretty colors. We're not a neighborhood, we're east of that.
Are you, you're actually in Highlands, I think?
Yeah.
You're north of that?
We're in north.
There.
Just south of the bayou.
Can we click on that just a second?
Yeah, you're in the middle.
Yeah, can you click on it?
Okay.
There you go.
Perfect.
There is one group enrolled.
That's me. I enrolled. I didn't know the name of my neighborhood, but I enrolled. Okay.
So the name of the-
You want to be a leader?
I want to be a leader. Yeah, I told her I wanted to be a leader.
Yeah.
I want to be a leader.
The name of the actual neighborhoods, those are generally set unless there's, you know, a very distinct difference. But your neighborhood group is what you need to identify the name of. So you decide with your neighbors, do you want to be called like the Highland Neighborhood Committee, or the Highlanders, or something like that.
Okay. And then on the Google site, for, and I don't know, because we didn't do this, we didn't go into detail, but is there a quick news alert for people, so the neighborhood leaders, for example, Mr. Ray told us earlier that Quaker was going to be closed for two nights in the night for some construction. Do we then message those neighborhood leaders to get the message out to that specific neighborhood, or is there an update on the Google site where they can see, alert, alert, there's a street closure or something happening?
So that seems to be more of a Nextdoor function, rather than this. This is more about just engaging with your neighbors, and if, you know, we want to work with our community development staff, if there's like an upcoming development being proposed, you know, we can reach out to our neighborhood contacts, or something like that.
So, and Dot, your question brought up for me, that we are looking for ways that in times of emergency, we can do those. We know exactly who to call, and to email and text if there's something emergent, to let them know. But she's absolutely right, Nextdoor is kind of the functional platform for those closures of streets and the slower-moving things. Yeah.
That's all.
Great. Nancy.
You, have you two been doing some research on the issues of pride in one's neighborhood? Like what are the characteristics that foster pride in neighborhoods, that type of research?
Oh, definitely. Yes. We're always reading articles, because it's a very dynamic field. But I think, I see two things as really cultivating that sense of neighborhood pride. One of them is just that sense of connectivity, you know, the interpersonal. So if we can have people doing block parties, or different events together, that will cultivate that sense of neighborhood identity. Two, being any physical aspects, or neighborhood identity signs. We had a group in Britton Park neighborhood work with Swanson Elementary School students to design a neighborhood flag. And they like researched the history of their neighborhood, and then, you know, had symbology for the flag. So it's really having ways to tie people to that neighborhood. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that's right on. Yeah, a place where people can physically gather, and also doing the connection, making connections in person, so less digital, more face-to-face. Can I borrow a cup of sugar? It's nice to see you and your dog today, that kind of stuff. Yeah.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, thanks. A question just popped to my mind, and that is, it's a little bit different from a neighborhood, but I'm wondering, do we do anything to make sure we get engaged, get our, those neighborhoods engaged, who are minority language speakers? I'm thinking, you know, we have our Russian community, our Hmong-Chinese communities, Spanish-speaking communities. Is there any extra effort in those, or does that just kind of pull in with the neighborhood itself?
So absolutely. Anessa and I are planning to do very targeted outreach into those communities, because they are, like I mentioned, some of the groups that may not have historically engaged with the city before. And I'm a Spanish speaker, so, you know, I'm really looking to dive deep into the Latino community in Arvada. But, you know, we were waiting for it to calm down a little, see what happened, iron out kinks, and then start doing targeted outreach. So we'll be doing that this spring.
Well, glad, I'm glad you've got that in mind, anyway. I think it's an area we need to at least focus on and keep in mind as we work with our neighborhoods.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I want to thank you both. This is exciting stuff, you know, I think it's certainly been a priority for the city to have any opportunity to, you know, I'm very fortunate in that I live in a neighborhood that is highly, highly organized. I mean, and we've got, we've got ladies in our neighborhood who are quilters, and they're the ones who give the quilts to the police department, to put in the police cars to comfort people. And we go out every spring and clean out the ponds, the lily pad ponds and everything, and so, you know, and that's part of an organized HOA, but it's the citizen pride in their neighborhood, and their desire to work with their neighbors, and to have their neighborhood be, you know, perhaps the winner of an award. But more importantly, to just that community spirit and community pride, I think is very important in terms of maintaining the quality of life that we have here in Arvada. So I appreciate what both of you are doing.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Good.
Yeah, great.
Mr. Ray, anything else for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to advise you that your upcoming workshop on April the 9th will cover two topics. Number one, I'll report to you on our efforts for organizational development, integration and alignment, as well as a conversation about our CIP and financing discussion for your consideration.
Very good. And hopefully, we'll have Mr. Jones and Mr. Pfeiffer back from their ocean journeys, and we'll have a full contingent. Okay, everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.